Stand with the recorded white song at this time. We don't have anybody signed up for public comments at this time, but this is our first meeting of the month where we will do employee shout-outs. So, do you want to do Rosebud?
Oh, yes, definitely. After the storm came through last week, week before, Rosebud Elementary was hit pretty good with some structure damage, but mainly trees down. And when I went over there to assess, pretty much all of the staff were outside removing the debris. I thought that was pretty cool.
Mine is, at the middle school, we have an employee named Jonna Jones. And I was in the bus pickup line at elementary school. And she must have a little at elementary school. And I was really impressed. I saw her, she was walking around, she must say, because she goes to the back door and waits for her little. And she was picking up the trash at the elementary school and putting it into the trash bin. She was picking up masks that either kids or people had left on the ground. She was picking up rathaus, she was picking up other trash. And I felt like that was really going above and beyond to make our community nice and make our schools nice. So, I wanted to give her a big shout-out. And also to our volleyball coach, I don't know who helped her with the video to Rosebud Hockes. But I loved the little video she did with the girls where they're throwing their stuff down and they stomp their foot and they have their uniforms on. I thought that was really good and they're doing such a good job this year. So, we're gonna move on and adopt our agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by Deb?
Oh, second by change.
Second by Tim with a change.
I would like to have the consent agenda before the discussions.
Okay, are you okay with that, Deb?
Yep.
Okay, so, to adopt the agenda, but consent will move, we'll do 7.1 clear through before we go on to...
Six.
To six. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. So, superintendent report at this time.
So, you have my report. What I did was I gave you our current enrollment numbers. And these are kids who have actually shown up. It's not just rolled over from infinite campus. So, we need to get our kiddos to school because our number's down. And also encourage families to turn in their enrollment packets if they haven't done so at this time. Native eyes, the student classes are starting to come in. If you see some of our Facebook pages out there, they've been taking pictures with the little kiddos in their glasses. Pretty cool. Melissa, you had asked for perfect heads for last year, and there were a total of six students that we will honor at the next board meeting. From last year.
Yes.
And then admin will start giving their board reports at the next meeting, starting at elementary schools.
Does anybody have anything for the superintendent?
No.
Cross-country, who won? Did we have a good showing?
I don't know, to be honest.
I knew I was volleyball, didn't football, I forgot to find out.
Yeah, I didn't.
Anybody know?
Michelle, did you have a chance to look at the agenda and look at the COVID guidelines update? Hello?
I'm here. I have the agenda in front of me right now and I'm looking at it, I'm actually looking at it right now.
Okay, so when we get to discussion, okay. So, moving, we're gonna move 6.1 to after, so a motion for 7.1, the action items, is there a motion? Moved by Tim. Second by Deb. All in favor? Yes.
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 And then we'll go ahead and do the, approve the memorandum of agreement regarding absences for work due to COVID-19. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Tim. Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now we are at discussion items. Facilities and maintenance, we're gonna get Chad on the phone for that. But you had asked for Littleburg School to be on. While we're getting Chad, what were you wanting to...
Well, we hadn't really met with the parents.
Okay, this is me, we're getting ready.
Okay.
Is that Chad?
That's Chad.
We can go ahead with Chad.
Okay.
So, do you wanna give some facility updates?
Uh, yeah, you want me just to jump in or...
Yep, right now, it's you.
Okay, so the middle school fence is complete, number one. Uh, that got done last week. Uh, Rosebud Elementary, we're still pretty optimistic for November 1 completion. Uh, we're dealing with an issue right now, it has to do with Golden West and the tribes. We're just training it somewhat from the tribe in order to move forward. Um, just kind of slowing up security camera and how we're putting those, getting those installed. Uh, but we're hopeful that gets resolved here in the next week to two. Um, you should start seeing asphalt within the parking lot. Uh, the water issue that was handled and that's all ready to go. Uh, their natural commander finished touches, um, subfloor for the gym floor started going in this week. And once they get that complete, they'll follow it up with the actual gym floor. Chad was ready. The classrooms is all done as far as, uh, the LDT that's on the flooring. Uh, cabinetry is in and, uh, they're just chasing around. So, yeah, if there's questions, I'll go ahead and stop.
Okay. We'll be out with access road. Any update on that?
Oh, I've got no update on that, Tim. There's been no movement on that.
Okay.
So, that, you know, that is something that we've had that temporary access road there. It was not in the plans and are to keep that, but I think what we'll do as a school district is leave that road there with hopes that eventually some days something can be done with adhesment that would allow us to go across there.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
Okay.
Chad, did, have you heard anything back from the firm in Rapid City that met with us about the high school and...
Yeah, yeah, right now they're putting their team together what they've done, Melissa, and they've sent me this already, but they've got it and scanned all those plans, the hardtapping plans from the school. And from there, they've got, you know, the computer software that they're able to do some sort of generate 3D generation thing that they're going to utilize when they start looking at the building and assessing. Um, they're doing all that on their own terms, um, you know, before they come with a proposal, they're gonna have all that in place and be able to talk to you as a board in regards to what the next step is.
Okay, so, do you think it's feasible that we need to have a discussion and look at our priorities again in regards to maintenance? I don't know what, we had heard that some of, what are they doing with the housing?
So, we hired a gentleman last week, you were at the last meeting, and he is, that's his one job. He's just going around and any of the requests that comes in, that's what he does. He's not driving the bus, he's not, we're not pulling him from anything else.
Okay.
And I and Chad went out on Friday and went and inspected and took a look at some of the work he's doing, and he's doing really good.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, there was some houses that weren't ready yet, so...
They're pretty much on target now.
And then, um, the high school track and football field, is that going to be something on the horizon that's gonna be, need to be resurfaced?
Well, typically you look at a 10-year window for a track resurfacing. Um, I know we've done it twice since I've been here, I got to look back, Melissa. I don't know that that's been on the radar as far as that one goes. Now, we've talked about upgrading the football field, but that, I think, is gonna be at a minimum tied in with a high school project, if not prioritized afterwards.
Okay, so when we talk about that upgrading now, we're talking about building like a better concession stand with bathrooms, that type of facility there? That's more in line with what other high schools have?
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything for facilities?
I think we covered most of them.
Well, the only thing is, I talked to Roberta about the grounds, conditions, and we need to improve the, especially around the tractor. They mowed, but the trash situation's pretty bad yet.
And I don't know how we combat that because I think a lot of that comes from where the dumpster placement is at the high school and with our windy days, because I fight that in my yard because I'm a boss, I'm right next to it, of picking that up. I mean, I don't know if that's a...
You get down in Houston where they come into the football field, it's pretty bad down there, so it needs to be cleaned up. And around the schools, there's a lot of trash on the schools, you address one school.
Yes.
But the other schools have a lot of trash issues.
So, when we talk about that, is that like newly the bus stop maintenance job? Or is that really each individual school's, um, janitorial staff going out and taking care of that?
Yep.
That's just...
Yeah.
Okay.
Just need a little more respect.
Okay, Chad, I don't think we, do you have any other updates for us on facilities and maintenance?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Littleburg School.
Yeah, Chad.
Okay. Like I said, we didn't, we were supposed to meet with parents, right? And inform them that we were not gonna have the school going. And we never did meet with the parents, we issued it at the last meeting that we weren't gonna have the emergency closure again.
Well, the one thing we told them at our last meeting, because I went back and looked at my notes when we had our last meeting with them last fall, was that if it continued, it would, the conversation would be here at the board.
Yeah.
So...
Are we getting any input at all?
Nope.
Has anyone applied for any positions out there?
Nope. The only ones that have are international teachers in order at our top level.
International teachers.
If we do get a chance to look at opening, I would like to see it just go to third grade.
That was the conversation we had two before.
Yeah. Especially with the new housing project coming up out there. It would justify the numbers.
Yep.
When they're talking 100 new houses out there, wow, that's 100 families coming in, potential families, that's a lot.
Okay, that's all I wanted to do.
Okay.
COVID policy, we already approved COVID pay, but COVID policy, um, Michelle, you wanted to discuss the policy.
Yes, I do. Um, my son, and I put this out here, I mean, it is what it is, but one of my, we were gone over the Labor Day weekend and we were in close contact with someone with COVID. And I took my son over to the clinic and they were so busy that he wasn't even getting in. So, then I went to another clinic, traveling further. Um, the one that he gave me a note that I'd been seen, because I needed to let the school know that he was not there. They told me I was supposed to take him, they'd keep him home for five days. And some facilities are saying three days, I think they've just standardized a policy about what students do when they first are either in close contact and then what we want them to do when they have COVID. Um, the CDC guidelines say right now that the students, if you contract COVID, you should stay home for five days. And then you should be able to return, um, with a mask. And then I, CDC is kind of saying that, you know, when somebody has been in close contact, they should wear a good mask. And that they're not, but my son stayed home for a week and then caught it, and so now he's staying home for another week. And so, that's the part that I just wanted to say that we should probably discuss, you know, what we want students to do when they do, when they are in close contact and what... And then they still have a COVID task force out there, that's where I got some of my test kits, because even the clinics just haven't even given them yet. I think things have been ordered, but just wanted to standardize so that the people know what to take here, what we want done and how we want it done.
None of our, none of our protocols have changed from last year in the schools.
So, if you've been exposed to it, you can come to school?
You just have to mask to tell you have symptoms. If you do have COVID, you stay home for five days. And those are the recommendations that are from the task force.
I was gonna say, the one clinic said one thing and the other clinic said another thing, so...
About working that hard protocols.
Yes, exactly, that's what I mean. I mean, if a student goes to see a clinic and one of them's telling them stay home for five days and you've been in close contact and the other one's telling you, yeah, you can go back to school with a mask. I mean, we just need to let our students know that they are allowed to come back. I just think it's good for everybody to be on the same page, uh, no matter what the clinic tells you. And like you say, we should have our own policy.
So, maybe whether, if we put it out on our school social media page or we put it out somehow that these are, you know, if you've been exposed but you don't have COVID, you can come to school, but you have to wear a mask. If you have COVID, you have to stay home, and when you come back, you have to wear a mask.
Yeah, I can just repeat what we sent out last year.
Yeah.
Because nothing's changed.
Yeah, that would be good. Okay, anything else on COVID policy?
No.
No.
We're not gonna issue a mask yet. Right?
Wrestling practice. Amanda?
I brought that one up. I know we kind of talked about it a little bit, but we didn't really quite have numbers. So, I asked Chris and then I asked Dean, maybe they could give us some information on like how many students are, how many kids are gonna be coming into this year? Dean was out today, but he said he don't need a bunch of money for boys. And then for girls, are there any?
I conservatively, I'm saying 10. I had eight this summer and I've got, um, I've got several girls that were sixth graders. So, last year I had a group with the middle school practicing with us last year. I had a group that, that weren't cheerleaders and they stayed in practice with us after their middle school season was done. And, um, so if those girls come out, I mean, we're, we're gonna easily have a dozen, if not more, girls. And I've recruited a couple extra from the high school that I haven't, they haven't been to practice yet, obviously, because they're, you know, they're cross-country girls, they're, you know, whatever. But they're friends of wrestlers that, you know, have like reached out to me and said, I'm wrestling, you know. So, I, I mean, easily a dozen, uh, is where, is where I'm sitting, so... And I would like to see the middle school continuing to practice with us because it helps us with the, wrestle, middle school practiced with us last year. Other than the first week or so before our season started. And that ups our numbers too, but, um, it gives us that continuity and, and those, those kids, kids know us and, and they, they practice with us. And, you know, in South Dakota, at seventh grade, you can wrestle at the high school level. And so, trying to get that, you know, going as well, so... So, yeah, I don't know what the numbers will be, but I mean, with, without middle school, there's probably easily gonna be 30 kids in our room.
That's a lot.
And I, and I think that number two that he gave me did include some of the boys from the middle school, that wrestle with them last year.
But if we can't find a location, is it gonna be still doable to bring middle school over when they can practice in their own space? I mean, if there's not a way.
Right, well, that is the, I don't, I mean, they, Iowa's had a couple of their practices last year and their, their own space works, but it kind of doesn't, I mean, they were kind of on the precipice of getting kicked out by boys basketball, or girls basketball, I mean, at the same time. Um, they have to put the tables, move the tables out of the way and roll a mat out in the, in the multipurpose room. And, I don't know. So, yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the best fit is there, but I mean, it's, with that, then I selfishly want to grab as many of those seventh graders that are ready to wrestle with me as soon as possible. And if there's new seventh and eighth graders, I won't, you know, we won't really know them. Or we won't be able to see if they're ready, other than, you know, because they'll be in a separate facility. I mean, it's...
So, we need to find a space for, with that amount of kids?
Well, and, and I, I mean, my, my frustration comes from, uh, so last year, I, it was, and maybe it was the way I interpreted it. I was under the period thought that this room is gonna be our room because there was talk of improvements happening in there. Padding on the walls, uh, doing something with those ceiling tiles that could fall on a certain moment, possibly locker rooms. And then, then it wasn't, you know, so, um, and, I mean, we've, I mean, historically, wrestling hasn't had a space. In the future, I'd really like to come back and talk about what I think wrestling should have. But that's not the interim. I mean, right now, we need something right now, which is why I started the conversation when I did. Because I, I don't like having it be November 15th, the first day of practice, and we're just now finding out what we're supposed to practice. And it's hard, it's hard to get that, it's hard to get the momentum going. It's hard to get kids bought into a program when we could be practicing in a hallway, you know, like that. And I know hallway's extreme, but, but, you know, it's, it's just that, that whole environment thing. I, I think we're gonna grow out of, of a space the size of the South Elementary Gym. And I'd like to say it was gonna happen really soon. My goal is for it to happen really soon, but, um, but yeah, that's, that's where I'm at. I, I brought some other things, but I, that's, but I just, I don't know, my, my, I, I don't like having the unknown. I like to know where we're practicing. Um, I didn't have open mats this, this summer for my high school girls and, well, the boys were always invited because we didn't have a home. Um, I, I just, you know, and, and sports, sports aren't a seasoned sport anymore. Sports are year-round, you know. I just, you know, and, and sports, sports aren't a seasoned sport anymore. Sports are year-round, you know, and, and we can't just go someplace and take our equipment with us, because our equipment is wrestling mats, you know, and wrestling mats don't move easy.
We discussed this this summer, right? And there was no progress made at all?
We started conversations back in August when they all came back, like, how can we, how can we find a good compromise for Tiana as well? Because she has PE, she has her family engagement event, so it's like, where, where's this common ground? You originally asked if there was a room over there. Is that still on the table? Because.
Well, I, I think we'd almost have to have two rooms. I don't know if a classroom, I, I don't know how, if a classroom would take more than one mat. One mat isn't gonna be enough for all of us, safety-wise, and especially with, I mean, you start looking at, you know, kids running into walls that aren't padded, that aren't made for a wrestling room, one mat for, like, one room for the boys and one room for the girls, and that would be tight, but that, I mean, that's, that's.
What do we have for rooms at the high school? Why, what did they do with the old driver's ed room?
You're over there more than anybody.
Used to connect with the government classroom. It used to be driver's ed, and government used to be on the junior hall down from the office. There used to be a divider in there that would come out, and it made it a big, huge room.
That's classrooms, last time.
Okay.
Big classroom.
There, they are.
My, my. Both wings, because the other wing has an open wing.
Yeah, the other wing has an open one, too. And I think upstairs had, on the top where the science was, where eighth grade, no, seventh grade scientists. I'm, I'm thinking back in the seventies, eighties, when school used to be set up. That's how I'm describing the rooms for anybody who's, who's listening to me. There used to be, at the end was Roger Cherry's room, then it was the stairwell, and then you went to the science rooms with Mr. McCarren. And that used to have the divider thing that they pulled across. That was a temporary thing that was spaced also. Are we? And at that time, Pitt County was a junior high, high school, and we had enough classrooms. So I guess, what about, what are additional classes that we've used every space?
Chris, you know anything about the?
I don't, I don't know as upstairs the high school anymore. I haven't, I haven't been up there in those halls.
I think they're used to most classrooms.
Yeah, they're, they're, all the high schools use.
Really? What about the Vouquet building?
We've got welding, we've got mechanics, the carpentry area is.
Isn't there a second floor, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where they used, the girl who came and did her, the clothing closet for the kids. So what is a carpentry room?
The carpentry room's the one with the big bay on the end, on the south side, and there's, we've got all kinds of equipment, carpentry equipment in there still. It's a big room, but there's a lot of equipment in there.
It's not being used?
I don't believe so.
No, we haven't had a teacher do that one?
No.
We, we looked at the, the building that, I don't know, probably fifteen years ago, was talked about being turned into a fitness room for staff. That's, that's, the maintenance team has, like, refrigerator doors, windows and things in there, but there's not, there's not running water, so there wouldn't be bathrooms. We won't be able to clean our mats, and that's probably about the size of one mat. So, yeah, so, I mean, we, we looked at a couple of options. I mean, I don't know, the, the problem, the problem that I see with, with some of our possible alternatives are, is that we need, we need access on Wednesdays, or not Wednesdays, weekends, sorry, S W. We need access on, on weekends and holidays, and so we need to have, it has to be a place where we can get into for our weekend tournaments, our Friday practices, our holiday practices. And, I mean, it's, it's gotta be, I mean, to me, it's gotta be close to campus. If we're not on campus, then we've got kids from, because I do tutoring Tuesdays. If, you know, we come back from a weekend of wrestling, we have Monday's practice, and then Tuesday, if you're behind work, you go, you go to tutoring on Tuesdays. And so if we have kids going to tutoring, and we're not close to campus, how are those kids getting there? The, the middle school kids have zap, they don't have an option, and if they get zapped, then they, they come to practice after they're done. If we, if we're too far away, how do those kids get to, how do those kids get to our facility? And, I don't know, I guess I, I've got no.
What does the middle school have for space? Does anyone know?
There's nothing.
Wherever we get hooked.
Yeah, there's nothing open, there's nothing open at the middle school. The only thing open at the middle school would be a small, that, it used to be the, it used to be the big room.
Oh, living skills.
Yeah, the home act room, and that's, and that's, that's a small room.
And it coincides with what elementary?
Elementary school?
Yeah.
Always between wrestling and basketball.
Wrestling and basketball.
Yeah, wrestling and basketball.
Chris, would that vocational room work, if you go and look at it? Is there water available in that building?
I haven't been in there for years, like, ninety-three years.
Would I need to do that? I think they need their own space, because if we decide to bring CTE back, if we decide to bring that back.
What I'm looking at is, we got this engineering team that's gonna set up, well, we're building more facilities for us, but it's just trying to get by.
Yeah, I would hope that whatever happens this year is short-term.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely.
But it's just an idea that, goodbye, until that building is put up.
And I think when we.
A lot of stuff to move and store.
Yeah, and I think when we say that, though, it's gonna have to come down to, the main word is maybe compromising between everybody, because everybody can't have what they want. We don't have the space to put what we want. But if we're all willing to come together and compromise, we can at least get through this year.
What day is your PE, Tiana?
Depending on which groups we have, twice a week, Monday and Thursdays. Just depends on what, what the schedule is, like, if there's no Monday school, then it's on Friday due to a holiday, or if there's no Friday school, which usually there isn't, then there are Mondays and Thursdays.
And who does that, who does PE class? Who comes over and does that?
I have a long-term sub that's in right now. Can I say your name? Jordan Ron.
Oh, yeah.
Jordan Ron, she's long-term subbing for us for multiple schools. PE's not so much the problem, it's because we're starting our archery club, and that was something that came from a survey that we did with our students on what type of after-school activities they would like to have. And archery came up. There are several kids that participate in archery in other schools within the district, but when they come to the middle school, high school level, there is not archery for them. And we sent kids to state nationals, like, all over last year, and it's really picking up. I'm gonna say picking up in other schools, too, and it's an option for those kids that don't participate in the full-on team sports. And so when that came out, as a, you know, one of the things that the students wanted to do, then we decided we were gonna pick that up as a club, after-school club.
So who has a supplemental on that? Has that been approved through TCEA as a supplemental?
Oh, it's, it's already, they're all supplemental, right? There's an elementary one, and I have a supplemental already.
Who has that?
I haven't hired anyone. We're going to the training next week, and it's Damian Blonder that's gonna do the actual coaching of it. And then I have Jordan as the PE teacher, because they can use it as the PE curriculum.
So is this something that the high school students and the middle school students can also join?
Because they don't have it, then they're gonna be allowed.
They get to go over there.
They'll be allowed to join our club.
So is there someplace else, because it's gonna include the middle school and high school that it can be held?
And that was what I asked. So it's a different space, you could go, but it's, you have to measure out so many feet.
Yeah, so the problem with the wrestling in there, so when the request came across, it was for year-round access. And I couldn't support that, because I had to look at more than just even our school. There's a resource center that uses it for their family nights, they use it for in services, for district-wide in services. So it's not just achievement. They use it for, sometimes for physical therapy of students that are there. And so I had to look at all, that's why I can't support a year-round facility. The year-round UCE, even with just our high school group doing this, it starts in November. That puts our gym out from November to March, the states in March. And the problem with that is the mats. It's not them being in the physical space or rearranging practice times. It's the mats, because if the mats are down across the whole entire gym, and anyone that's ever rolled one up, well, what I'm talking about, you can't roll them up each night, and then the storage of them and all that. So the problem was the mats, so that's why I couldn't support it, because anything you do would have to be on top of mats that were there. And so one of the things that I was thinking, and I know we were in a, you know, a planning stage or trying to problem-solve this. And so we all met this summer, and just recently, I was thinking about it, and one of the things that I shared with Roberto was that we could do a split practice if wrestling was able to compromise with us and use half of the gym instead of the whole entire gym. Because if they use, like, the south end of the gym, then we would be able to have our line measurements for archery, because we already have our post in where the curb goes for archery on the north side. So what we would do is, we would be willing for the archery to come to a late practice, just like high school does with, you know, when they have to share the gym for girls and boys basketball. So wrestling could have their practices every single night on that half of the gym, at the regular time that they usually have it. And then we would come in, buses are usually running about five forty-five, so we could come in at five forty-five, six o'clock, and run archery practice from six to seven. As for transportation, that's something we could work out. Most of our informal ones that have said they're interested, either drive or live close by town, or their parents are willing to provide the transportation for their practices. So that was one of the things that I thought we could share that space. We wouldn't have practice at the same time, because that's not possible, especially with toes and arrows, and we just wouldn't be able to do that. So that was one of the things I did think about, but, again, it does require a compromise of using half the gym, because the other half could still be used, not only for archery, it could be used for PE, the in services. The EXED can set up all the cables on that side. We would be able to coexist, but, you know, again, it does require, like, for our, our end, for the archery, we would compromise and have late practice. And then on their end, they would only be able to use one half of the gym, which is a lot bigger than a classroom.
I have a solution to the mats. We can adjust that. We were using the really, really old middle school mat, because we thought we've got to leave it down, so that's why the ginormous mat was there. We have lighter mats, and we can roll mats up every night. We just can't roll that one up, because it was the beast that we literally drug from the middle school and threw down, because we thought it was staying. So we have lots of light mats, and we can roll mats up from the whole gym every night. That's not an issue.
Well, they also roll that up every night.
Yeah, at the middle school, they roll that one up every night. My other thing, and this is, this is getting nitpicky, I know, but we are a high school activities association sanctioned sport, two of them. And this archery is a club sport. You have, you have flexibility of transportation. We have outlined suggestions that you offered for us, like the one up here in the corner. That seems to me like you guys have more flexibility to do archery there, and we won't be in the way of PE, we won't be in the way of EXED, family nights, achievement, family nights, any of those things. I can make the mats get rolled up every night. We can't, we can't do half the room for wrestling practice with all of us in there. It's not, it's a safety issue. We're gonna be hitting tile floor, we're gonna be hitting wherever the posts are. It's not, it's not, it's just not safe. And again, we are a high school activities association sanctioned sport, two programs. So I, like I said, I can roll mats up every night, that's not an issue. We can, we can have the mats up against the wall, it won't be in the way for PE. The, the half, half of the thing, half of the gym for archery, that, that doesn't work. We need to have two, or, it's a, it's a mat and a half, a mat and three-fourths is what we have down, a circle and a half or whatever. But I can get those rolled up every night, if that's the issue, but we can't have less than a mat and a half.
I guess I don't understand that, how a classroom would work with not half a gym, you split your practices?
It would have to be two classrooms. We can't have, I mean, we'd have to have, and we, we can't, we don't have that flexibility. Like, I know boys and girls basketball are doing it. We would lose, and we'd lose our numbers, because so many of our kids are, are uppercut knee kids, we have two-strike kids, we have kids that, that, like, we have a hard time doing them to a Friday practice, or even to, to getting them into to leave for a, a tournament, because they don't have reliable transportation. So if we are telling the, the, our girls or our boys, vice versa, that they have to come to a late wrestling practice, that's not, that, we're, we're gonna lose our program, and that's, that's something I can't. I mean, I'm a Todd County wrestler, and I, I'm passionate about Todd County wrestling, and I'm not gonna let us lose it, because of a one-year facility. I mean, I, if you guys are willing to go late, we can roll our mats up, and your lines will be under the mats. I, that's not a problem. I, we can't, we can't do less than, less than the gym for both programs, boys and girls. I just, I, I, I mean, I can do lots of compromising, but I know that that's not gonna work for us.
So if you're saying you can do it late from six to seven, is using the middle school, because they don't have a late practice over there, or the elementary school, because they don't have a late practice over there for your archery club? These are.
No, because of our equipment, all the equipment's gonna be stored right in our gym, and we have to transport that. And if you've seen its targets, its 3D targets of animals, like, transporting those back and forth, not gonna work.
Is there storage at one of those schools for that equipment? Do we know?
I don't know, but I'm not sure, because I don't talk to anyone over there, but one of the things, like, with this compromise and stuff, like, if he's willing to roll up the mats every night, that's fine, too, and we could still use our gym. But the thing I feel is we're being pushed out of our own building, and we've worked hard for those students at that school to make that their school. And it's really sad, because this is something that is a student. I mean, it came from a student survey. And, you know, we're really trying to encourage those students to take part in things other than just coming to school. And then again, we're disrupting the academic program, we're disrupting EXED, like, it seems like, to me, I just feel, this is a feeling, I just feel like, you know, it's always left off to the side and whatever with EXED and with, you know, achievement. And it shouldn't feel that way, like, our students are part of the district, too, and that's the facility that we were assigned to use. And I'm willing to make compromises to make it work, but, you know, I've suggested four different things since we had this meeting, and none of them have been options for, for wrestling, so.
So if you're rolling up the mats every night, you're willing to do that?
Absolutely.
And then that way, you get to have archery, and then Resource gets to use that, everything we use it for.
Yeah, because they can use it during the day if they're rolled up every, you know, every year.
That sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan.
Now, the, on the next side, and that's falls under building stuff, we don't have access to those locker rooms there. And so we have twenty-plus kids changing in the two one-stall bathrooms in the hallway, and.
But what if she turned that classroom into a locker room, up source?
How come we can't use the locker rooms?
I know, that's what I'm saying.
They would need to be unlocked. One of them was used for Resource for a changing room.
Yeah, they could change for the kids.
They just need to be unlocked.
So could we, can you, can you survive with one locker room?
We have boys and girls.
Boys and girls, though.
Well, because right now, you're using a two-stall bathroom, so could you still use the two-stall bathroom and the locker room and separate the boys and girls that way, because I don't wanna push out the Resource room, especially, our special egg pit.
The, yeah, the Resource room, they, they have, they have shelves in there, and they have a changing table. And that's in the girls' locker room, and that wouldn't be in the way. It's the other one that's, that's locked, and I have no idea what's in it. I've never been in that one, and I've been butting heads with my dad.
Because they asked you to do the locker.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's gonna fight. It's only gonna be tired, that hasn't happened yet, but.
But I think there's a way we could work through all this. I think, you know, if we open that locker room, we figure out a way to make sure the boys and girls have their own separate spaces, and it sounds like our compromise is made.
And it's only temporary.
And it's only temporary till we can get a building built. Till we, and we're gonna build a new building.
And, and going back to the, the year-round request, again, that was before I knew anything about Tiana's archery. That was when I was under the impression that it was a, that it was literally just a reminder request. Like, I was in the impression that that was our facility, so that, that I.
Which is the first time I've ever heard that.
Yeah, that's, that maybe was just my interpretation. Maybe I got super excited.
So is there, can you use it during? So, is there, can they use it during the holidays, can they use it in the summer months, is there a problem with that?
The reason they couldn't use it this door was because it was being repainted.
Repainted, yeah.
So that's why they couldn't use it, they were doing upgrades and, so...
But now it's all done, so you could use it on the weekends, you could use it on holidays?
So, so do I, uh, do I, can I, how should I, um, for building usage, I also am trying to do our, um, youth club, which goes later, but I, we can all those mats up as well, um, should I put a usage form in for this year's high school season, and then a usage, usage form also for the elementary wrestling, which gets over about a month after the high school season, is that, as long as we roll the mats up?
Is it the ADU or is it elementary?
Yeah, it's the, it's the ADU.
That's a different thing, because it does specifically say outside clubs in the policy, it says outside clubs are subject to whatever the academic needs are, first of the academic and, like, those high school sports would take precedent over an outside club, so, like, I mean, that's what our policy says, so that's kind of why I said...
Is that an every-night thing, or is that a...
We do it two nights a week, um, and we did, usually did it right after the high school practice, which obviously won't work, um, I could, but I could do, I could do Sundays and another night of the week, you know, but, um, uh...
I think we could find some way to make it work, though, because these are still students of Todd County School District, and we're talking about building a wrestling program here, and we've been lacking a wrestling program for a lot of years here, so I think when it comes up, we can find some kind of compromise to make it work for those little guys and girls, because even though it's a deal, it's still, they're still students within our school district, you know, all of them are students, we need to come to a compromise, so they all get to enjoy everything about school.
Hearing Melissa say that, and my wheels are always turning, it's too bad that we couldn't, barring transportation, of course, because we couldn't make Rosebud School and then we brought the wrestling.
Yeah, I mean, there'd be more than enough space, we have...
Right, when we come back to that, the tutoring issue and the middle school's zap issue, though, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to, we'd almost be running, yeah.
This is my wheels.
Yeah.
But when we think about that, too, we also have Rosebud, which is a vacant school, and you have Littlebrook, which is a vacant school, too.
That was one of the first suggestions, was...
That was transportation nightmare.
Yeah, well, and the loss of practice time, if we have to get out there, and then get back, and we have activity buses, we're losing a half hour to an hour of practice.
Maybe all that space.
Definitely future conversation.
Just a thought.
Yeah, it sounds something like you're on the road to getting this worked out.
Yep.
And, it's gonna, it's gonna be a tough year, I mean, if we support both schools, we support everything you're trying to do, we support what Tiana's trying to do.
It's temporary, until we...
And, I think you guys can work this out for a year.
We will.
I think for the best interest of all of our kids, because it's basically what we're doing for them, is we're doing for them, so that they can participate in everything. Okay.
Chris, you need to come to the next facilities meeting we have, we know what your needs are going to be.
When is that?
Well, as soon as the team gets done designing what they're going to do, so...
Yeah.
I'm not going to get crazy, but there are some things that...
We're dreaming big, and Indiana's going to smash our list, but we're dreaming big.
Yeah, but we're still dreaming.
We're still dreaming, we're still dreaming a big, 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 big building.
Please be respectful to each other on this, it's going to be tough for you guys, but please be respectful, thank you.
Thank you, okay, we have security and safety, and I'm going to struggle here, so I'm going to ask, um, if anybody remembers which one of these it falls under, because it does allow for us to go into executive...
Safety?
Safety, is it six that they put in place? I think it is.
It is.
So we are going to go into executive session for SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two dash six for safety and security at six seventeen here, but it is, it is in the wall, it's just never been put on there.